When basketball legend Michael Jordan's daughter Jasmine receives a rejection letter from Lincoln Academy's prestigious basketball scholarship program, something doesn't add up. Her stats are better than anyone else who applied. Twenty-two points per e-game, perfect 4.0 GPA, and double the required community service hours. As Michael stares at the rejection letter in disbelief, his competitive spirit ignites. Jasmine Jordan stared at the white envelope on the kitchen table. Her name was printed on the front in fancy black letters. Ms. Jasmine Jordan. The return address showed the logo of Lincoln Academy, the best basketball school in Chicago. Her hands shook as she picked it up. "Go ahead and open it, honey," her father said. Michael Jordan, the greatest basketball player ever, sat across from her, his large hands wrapped around a coffee mug, but his eyes never left his daughter's face. Jasmine took a deep breath. She had worked so hard for this basketball scholarship. Early morning practices, late-night shooting drills, perfect grades, community service every weekend at the youth center where her dad used to play as a kid. "What if they say no?" she whispered. Michael leaned forward. "Then it's their loss, but you won't know until you open it." Jasmine slid her finger under the seal and pulled out the letter. The paper was thick and official-looking. She unfolded it carefully and began to read. Her father watched as her expression changed. First hope, then confusion, and finally disappointment filled her eyes. "They said no," Jasmine said quietly, placing the letter down. "I didn't get the scholarship." Michael reached for the letter. "That can't be right. Your stats are better than anyone else who applied." He read it quickly, his forehead wrinkling as he got to the important part. "While we acknowledge Ms. Jordan's impressive basketball record and academic achievements, we regret to inform you that she has not been selected for the Lincoln Academy Athletic Excellence Scholarship this year. We had many qualified applicants and limited spots available." The rest was just fancy words that didn't explain anything. "This doesn't make sense," Michael said, reading it again. "You averaged twenty-two points per game. You have a 4.0 GPA. Your community service hours are double what they require." Jasmine tried to hide her tears. "Maybe I'm just not good enough." "No," Michael shook his head firmly. "That's not it. I've watched you play. I've seen the other kids at the tryouts. You were the best one there, and not because you're my daughter." He stood up and paced the kitchen, the way he used to pace the sidelines when he was a coach. Jasmine had seen that look before. Her dad was thinking hard. "Who else applied that you know?" he asked. "Zoe Williams got one, and Tyler Castro." "They announced it on Instagram yesterday," Jasmine said. "Both of them are good, but..." "But what?" "Their stats aren't as good as mine," she admitted. "Zoe averaged seventeen points, and Tyler only had fifteen." "My defense numbers are better too." Michael nodded slowly. "And their grades?" "Zoe has a 3.8, I think." "Tyler has a 3.5." Jasmine's phone dinged with a text message. It was from her best friend Kira. "Kira got rejected too," Jasmine said, reading the message. "That's weird. She's almost as good as me, definitely better than Tyler." Michael sat back down and looked at his daughter. As a father, he had tried to give his children a normal life, even though nothing about being Michael Jordan's kid was normal. He wanted them to earn things on their own, to feel the pride of achievement without his name attached. "Do you know what Kira and you have in common that's different from Zoe and Tyler?" he asked carefully. Jasmine thought for a moment. "Well, we both live in nice houses. Our parents have good jobs. Zoe's mom is a single mother, and Tyler's family just moved here from Puerto Rico last year." Michael tapped his fingers on the table. "So they might need the money more." "But I thought the scholarship was based on basketball skills and grades, not on who needs money," Jasmine said, confused. "That's what all the application materials said?" "That's exactly what they said," Michael agreed. His voice was calm, but Jasmine could see the familiar competitive fire building in his eyes, the same look he had in all those championship games she'd watched on video. "What are you going to do, Dad?" she asked. Michael Jordan stood up, his tall frame casting a shadow across the kitchen. "First, I'm going to make some calls. There's something not right here, and I want to know what. And Jasmine?" "Yes, Dad?" "This isn't over, not by a long shot. I've never walked away from a challenge, and I'm not about to start now, especially not when it comes to my daughter." Jasmine felt a spark of hope. Throughout her life, she had watched her father build businesses, win championships, and change basketball forever. When Michael Jordan set his mind to something, the world better. Get ready! Little did the Lincoln Academy School Board know what was coming their way. Michael Jordan sat in his home office, the walls lined with framed jerseys and championship trophies, but his proudest achievements weren't on display here. They were the photos of his children that covered his desk. He picked up a silver frame with a picture of five-year-old Jasmine sitting on his shoulders at the United Center. Her tiny hands rested on his head, and both wore matching grins. The Chicago Bulls crowd roared in the background. Not that Jasmine cared. To her, he wasn't the basketball legend. He was just Dad. "We've come a long way, haven't we?" Michael whispered to the photo. He remembered how hard it had been to balance being Michael Jordan the superstar with being Michael Jordan the father. During his years with the Chicago Bulls, he would fly home between playoff games just to tuck his kids into bed. Later, as owner of the Charlotte Hornets, he arranged his schedule around Jasmine's basketball games whenever possible. The phone rang, interrupting his thoughts. It was his old teammate Scottie Pippen. "Hey, Mike. Got your message? What's this about Jasmine and a scholarship?" Michael explained the situation, his voice growing more frustrated with each word. "That doesn't sound right," Scotty agreed. "Jasmine's got game. Real game. Not just good for being Michael Jordan's daughter game." "Exactly," Michael said. "And the rejection letter doesn't give any real reason. Just vague talk about many qualified applicants." "I've got a cousin who works in the Lincoln Academy office," Scotty offered. "Want me to ask around?" "Please, do," Michael said. "Something's not adding up." After hanging up, Michael walked to Jasmine's room. He knocked gently on the door. "Come in," Jasmine called. She was sitting cross-legged on her bed, reviewing game footage on her tablet. Even with tears still drying on her cheeks, she was studying basketball. Michael felt a surge of pride. "Watching last week's game?" he asked, sitting beside her. Jasmine nodded. "I missed three open shots in the third quarter. I should've pump-faked on the second one." Michael smiled. It was like hearing himself at her age. "Remember when you first picked up a basketball?" he asked. Jasmine paused the video. "Kind of. I was pretty young." "You were four," Michael said. "We were at a charity event. There were cameras everywhere, and people kept asking you to pose with me." "That part hasn't changed much," Jasmine said with a small smile. "No, it hasn't. But that day, you got tired of the cameras. You wandered off and found a kid-sized basketball. I watched you try to dribble it. The ball was almost as big as you were." Jasmine laughed. "Was I any good?" "Terrible," Michael admitted. "But you kept trying. You had this look on your face, pure determination." "That's when I knew." "Knew what?" "That you had it, the same fire I had." Michael tapped his chest. "It's not something I could give you. It comes from in here." Jasmine turned off her tablet. "Some people think that's the only reason I'm good, because I'm your daughter." "And what do you think?" Michael asked. "I think I've worked too hard to believe that," she said firmly. "I was at the gym at 5:00 a.m. today, Dad, just like yesterday, and the day before that." "Exactly," Michael nodded. "Being my daughter opened some doors." "Sure, but you're the one who walked through them. You're the one who put in the work." He reached into his pocket and pulled out her rejection letter, now folded and creased. "This piece of paper? It doesn't define you. Whatever reason they..." "Had for saying no, it doesn't change who you are or what you can do." Jasmine wiped away a fresh tear. "But it still hurts." "I know it does," Michael said softly. "You know, I got cut from my high school basketball team my sophomore year." "You did?" Jasmine looked surprised. Everyone knew the story, but hearing it from her dad still felt special. "Coach Herring didn't think I was ready. It was the most painful rejection of my life at that point. I went home and cried in my room, just like you did today." "What did you do?" she asked, even though she knew the answer. "I used it," Michael said simply. "Every time I felt tired or wanted to quit, I remembered that feeling. It became fuel." Hannah handed her the rejection letter. "This can be your fuel, Jasmine, but first, we need to find out what really happened, because something doesn't feel right, and I've learned to trust my instincts." Jasmine looked at her father, the man who had faced every challenge head-on, who had turned every setback into a comeback. She saw the determination in his eyes, the same look he had in Game Five of the 1997 NBA Finals, when he played with a 103-degree fever and still scored 38 points. "So what's our next move?" she asked. Michael stood up. "First, I need to make a few more calls. Then we start gathering evidence." "Evidence for what?" Michael's expression was serious but calm. "To show the school board exactly who they're dealing with, and it's not just Michael Jordan the basketball player or Michael Jordan the businessman." "Who is it, then?" Jasmine asked. "Michael Jordan the father," he said. "And that's someone who never gives up, not ever." The next morning, Michael's phone rang early. The caller ID showed Scottie Pippen's name. "Mike, you were right," Scotty said without greeting. "My cousin Darnell got some info. You're not going to like it." Michael glanced at the clock. 6:15 a.m. He slipped out of bed and walked to the hallway so he wouldn't wake his wife. "Tell me what you found out," Michael said quietly. Darnell overheard a conversation in the teacher's lounge. The scholarship committee chair, a guy named Victor Reynolds, specifically told the other members not to consider Jasmine. Michael's grip tightened on the phone. "On what grounds?" he said. "And I'm quoting Darnell here. The Jordan girl doesn't need financial help. We should save the scholarships for families who actually need them." Michael closed his eyes, taking a slow breath. "That's not how merit scholarships work. The application specifically says selection is based on athletic ability, academics, and community service." "Exactly," Scotty agreed. "Darnell says there's more. Reynolds apparently has a history of playing." "Favourites. His niece got a scholarship three years ago with stats way below the cutoff." "Who is this Reynolds guy?" "Longtime board member. Used to coach boys' basketball at Lincoln before he moved up to administration. Been there about fifteen years." Michael leaned against the wall, processing this information. "Thanks, Scotty. This helps a lot." "What are you going to do?" "First, I need to confirm what Darnell heard." "Then we'll see." After hanging up, Michael went to his office and turned on his computer. He typed "Victor Reynolds Lincoln Academy Basketball" into the U search bar. Several articles appeared, including one featuring a photo of Reynolds standing with the boys' team after a championship win five years ago. Michael studied the man's face. Round glasses, grey moustache, stern expression, something about him seemed familiar. The door creaked open, and Jasmine walked in wearing basketball shorts and a Chicago Bulls t-shirt. "I heard you talking," she said. "Any news?" Michael hesitated before answering. Throughout his career, he had shielded his children from the uglier sides of fame and success, but Jasmine was sixteen now, almost a woman, and this directly affected her. "Sit down, Jas," he said, pointing to the chair across from his desk. He explained what Scotty had told him, watching his daughter's expression change from curiosity to hurt to anger. "So I didn't get the scholarship because we have money?" she asked, her voice rising. "That's not fair. What about all those hours I spent practicing? What about my grades?" "It's not fair," Michael agreed. "And if what Scotty's cousin heard is true, it might also be against the school's own rules. What do we do now?" "We need proof," Michael said. "Right now, all we have is something someone overheard." "That's not enough," Jasmine thought for a moment. "Kira's mom works at the school library. Maybe she knows something." "Good thinking," Michael nodded. "And I need to learn more about this scholarship program. Who funds it? Who oversees it? There must be guidelines they have to follow." He turned back to his computer and continued searching. After a few minutes, he found an old newspaper article about the scholarship's founding. "It was established ten years ago by a group of Chicago business leaders, including several former Bulls players, to support athletic excellence regardless of financial need." "Look at this," Michael said, pointing to the screen. Jasmine came around the desk to read. "The scholarship founders included your godfather Scotty, Charles Oakley, and..." "Wait, is that Coach Phil Jackson?" she asked, pointing to a photo. "Yes, it is," Michael confirmed, surprised himself. "I didn't know Phil was involved with this scholarship." "Can you call him?" Jasmine asked. "I haven't talked to Phil in a while, but yes, I can call him." Michael dialed his former coach's number. After a few rings, the familiar calm voice answered. "Michael Jordan. It's been too long." "Good to hear your voice, Coach," Michael said sincerely. "I'm calling about something important. Did you help establish a scholarship program at Lincoln Academy about ten years ago?" "I did," Phil confirmed. "Along with several other Chicago sports figures. It was meant to recognize athletic excellence and academic achievement." "Why do you ask?" Michael explained the situation with Jasmine's rejection and what they had learned. There was a long pause before Phil spoke again. "That's not how the scholarship was designed to work. It was explicitly created to be merit-based, not need-based. The committee isn't supposed to consider financial status at all." "That's what I thought," Michael said. "Do you still have any connection with the program?" "I'm still on the foundation board, but we just provide the funding. The school handles the selection process." "But I can look into this, Michael. This isn't right." After finishing the call, Michael turned to Jasmine. "Phil's going to help, but we need more evidence." Jasmine's phone buzzed with a text. "It's Kira," she said, reading the message. "Her mom says she can meet us for coffee in an hour. She knows things about the scholarship committee." Michael nodded. "Good, very good." As they prepared to leave, Jasmine noticed her father staring at the photo of Victor Reynolds again. "What is it, Dad? Do you know him?" "I'm not sure," Michael said slowly. "But something about him seems familiar, like we've met before, and not in a good way." Little did Michael know that this was just the beginning of a much bigger problem, one that went far beyond Jasmine's scholarship rejection. The truth that was about to come out would shake Lincoln Academy to its core. The coffee shop was busy when Michael and Jasmine arrived. They found a quiet corner table where Kira and her mother, Mrs. Taylor, were already waiting. Mrs. Taylor looked nervous, constantly checking over her shoulder as if someone might be watching. "Thank you for meeting us," Michael said, keeping his voice low. Mrs. Taylor nodded. "I've worked at Lincoln Academy for twelve years. I've seen things that aren't right, but I've never had the power to change them." "Until now," Michael said. Mrs. Taylor pulled a folder from her bag. "I started keeping records three years ago, when I noticed patterns in who gets scholarships and who doesn't. It's not just about your daughter, Mr. Jordan." She opened the folder, revealing spreadsheets with student names, test scores, athletic statistics, and notes. "The scholarship committee claims they choose based on merit, but look at these numbers." She pointed to columns comparing successful and rejected applicants. "Students from wealthy families or with famous parents are almost always rejected, even with top scores." Michael studied the data. "So it's not just Jasmine?" "No," Mrs. Taylor confirmed. "Last year, the daughter of a famous Chicago surgeon was rejected despite having the highest GPA in her class and captaining the volleyball team to state championships." Jasmine leaned forward. "What about Tyler Castro? He got the scholarship this year, but his stats aren't as good as mine." Mrs. Taylor flipped to another page. "Tyler's family immigrated from Puerto Rico after Hurricane Maria destroyed their home. They lost everything. He's talented, yes, but not at your level." "So they're making decisions based on need, not merit," Michael said. "Even though the scholarship guidelines say otherwise..." "Exactly," Mrs. Taylor nodded. "And here's where it gets worse. Look at these names." She pointed to a list of scholarship recipients from the past five years. "See anything strange?" Michael examined the list carefully. "Several have the last name Reynolds. Any relation to Victor Reynolds?" "Nieces, nephews, and his son's best friend," Mrs. Taylor confirmed. "None of them ranked in the top five for their year." Michael's jaw tightened. "He's giving scholarships to his own family while rejecting more qualified students." "That's part of it," Mrs. Taylor said. "But there's more. The school gets federal grant money based on their diversity statistics. More scholarship students. From disadvantaged backgrounds means more funding. So they're using the scholarship program to boost their grant numbers," Michael realized, "and rejecting students like Jasmine who would take a spot without helping their statistics." "Can I take a picture of these records?" Jasmine asked Mrs. Taylor. "Better than that," Mrs. Taylor handed them the entire folder. "I made copies. This is yours now." Michael thanked her. "This is incredibly helpful, but we still need more concrete evidence. The school could claim these are just patterns, not proof." "What about the scholarship application itself?" Jasmine suggested. "It says selection is based solely on athletic achievement, academic excellence, and community service. Nothing about financial need." "Good point," Michael agreed. "We need to get a copy of the official guidelines." Mrs. Taylor reached into her bag again. "Already got that, too." She pulled out a thick booklet with "Lincoln Academy Scholarship Program: Official Guidelines and Requirements" printed on the cover. Michael flipped through it and stopped at page twelve. "Here's the selection criteria. Listen to this. Financial need shall not be considered in the selection process. All applicants shall be evaluated solely on the criteria listed in Section 2A." "That's clear enough," Jasmine said. "One more thing," Mrs. Taylor lowered her voice even further. "There's a teacher on the board, Mrs. Washington. She doesn't agree with what's happening, but she's afraid to speak up. She might help you if approached carefully." Michael nodded thoughtfully. "How do I reach her?" "She teaches advanced English. Her classroom is in the east wing, Room 213. She stays late on Thursdays to grade papers." As they left the coffee shop, Michael felt a mixture of anger and determination. "We need to organize all this information. Create a clear case that shows the pattern." "Let's call Kira and some of the other rejected students," Jasmine suggested. "See if they'll share their application materials so we can compare." "Good idea," Michael agreed. "I'll also reach out to some of the Bulls alumni who donated to the scholarship fund. They should know how their money is being used." Back home, they spread the documents across the dining room table. Michael called Charles Oakley, another scholarship founder, who was outraged by what they'd discovered. "That's not what we set this up for," Charles fumed over the phone. "We wanted to support athletic excellence, period. Some rich kids work just as hard as poor ones." "Exactly," Michael agreed. "Can you send me the original founding documents for the scholarship?" "Already texting them to you," Charles promised. "And Mike, give 'em hell." Jasmine was on her own phone, texting classmates. "Four other students are willing to share their application materials," she reported. "All had better stats than the winners. All from upper-middle-class families, all rejected." Michael nodded, arranging the papers in front of him. "It's starting to come together." Just then, Michael's phone dinged with a text from Phil Jackson. "Found something interesting about Reynolds? Call me." Michael stepped into his office to make the call privately. When he returned, his expression was grim. "What is it, Dad?" Jasmine asked, concerned. "I finally remembered why Reynolds looked familiar," Michael said quietly. "Twenty years ago, before you were born, he was a sports reporter for a small Chicago paper. He wrote several very negative articles about me, claimed I was selfish and bad for the team." "What? Why would he do that? Phil just told me. Reynolds tried to get an exclusive interview with me back in ninety-seven. I was busy with the playoffs and turned him down. A week later, he lost his job at the paper. He blamed me for it." Jasmine's eyes widened. "So this could be personal? After all these years?" "Some people hold grudges for a lifetime," Michael said. "Especially when their careers are involved." "That's crazy," Jasmine shook her head. "To take it out on me twenty years later." "It fits the pattern," Michael said, looking at the evidence they'd gathered. "But it's bigger than just us now. This affects dozens of students every year." Fies picked up the scholarship guidelines, his resolve strengthening. "We need to take this to the school board, all of it." "What if they don't listen?" Jasmine asked. Michael's expression was determined but calm. "Then we make them listen. But first, I want to meet this Mrs. Washington. Something tells me she might be the key to breaking this whole thing open." Little did they know, Mrs. Washington had secrets of her own, secrets that would turn this scholarship dispute into something much more significant than anyone could have imagined. Thursday afternoon came quickly. Michael parked his car in the visitors' lot at Lincoln Academy, a sprawling brick building with ivy climbing its walls. Students streamed out of the main entrance, many stopping to stare or whisper when they recognized him. "Remember, be casual," Michael told Jasmine as they walked through the hallways. "We're just here to ask about English class requirements." The school corridors were lined with trophy cases and framed photographs of successful alumni. Michael noticed that his donation to their gym renovation five years ago was prominently displayed, which only made the current situation more ironic. They found Room 213 and peered through the small window in the door. A woman with silver-streaked hair sat at her desk, reading papers through half-moon glasses. Michael knocked gently. "Mrs. Washington?" She looked up, startled. Her eyes widened when she recognized Michael Jordan standing in her doorway. "Mr. Jordan," she said, rising from her chair. "This is unexpected." "May we come in?" Michael asked. "This is my daughter Jasmine." Mrs. Washington nodded. Mrs. Washington nodded, closing the classroom door behind them. "I know who you are, Jasmine. Your essay on 'To Kill a Mockingbird' last semester was exceptional." Jasmine smiled. "Thank you." Mrs. Washington seemed nervous but composed. "I suspect this isn't about English class." "No," Michael confirmed. "It's about the Athletic Scholarship Program." Mrs. Washington's expression changed subtly. "I see." She walked to the windows and closed the blinds, then returned to her desk. "I was wondering if you might come asking questions." "We've learned some troubling things," Michael said carefully, "about how the selections are made." Mrs. Washington sighed deeply. "I've been on the scholarship committee for eight years. The last three have been difficult." "Because of Victor Reynolds?" Michael asked. She nodded. "He took over as chair and changed how we operate. Not officially, of course. The guidelines remain the same on paper." "But in practice?" Jasmine asked. "In practice? We now consider factors that should be irrelevant," Mrs. Washington admitted. "Family income, connections, background stories that might look good in the school newsletter." Michael placed the folder of evidence on her desk. "We've gathered some information that suggests a pattern of discrimination against students from wealthier families, regardless of merit." Mrs. Washington examined the documents, nodding sadly. "This matches what I've observed." "We're planning to bring this to the full school board," Michael explained. "But we wanted to speak with you first." "Mrs. Washington" removed her glasses, rubbing the bridge of her nose. "The board meeting is next Tuesday. Reynolds has significant influence with most members." "But not with you," Michael observed. "No," she confirmed. "Not with me?" "Why?" Jasmine asked directly. "What makes you different?" Mrs. Washington hesitated, then opened her desk drawer. She removed an old photograph and handed it to Michael. It showed a young basketball team, boys around fourteen years old. In the center stood a skinny teenager with a familiar face. "That's me," Michael said, surprised. "Laney High School, Junior Varsity." "Look at the coach," Mrs. Washington instructed. Michael examined the young woman standing beside the team, her arm around a discouraged-looking Michael Jordan. "That's you," he realized. "You were my JV coach before I got cut." Mrs. Washington nodded. "Before I moved to Chicago, I taught in North Carolina. You probably don't remember, but after Coach Herring cut you from Varsity... I told you something." Michael's eyes widened with recognition. "You said..." "How you respond to this will define you more than any success ever could. You remembered," she smiled. "Those words stayed with me," Michael said quietly. "Through my whole career." Jasmine looked between them, amazed at the connection. "I've followed your career, your life," Mrs. Washington continued. "Not just the basketball, but how you handled yourself as a person. When I see Reynolds blocking students because of who their parents are, especially your daughter, it goes against everything I believe education should be." "Will you help us?" Michael asked. "Yes," she nodded. "But you should know what you're up against. This goes beyond the scholarship program," she lowered her voice. "Reynolds has been misusing school funds for years. The board turns a blind eye because he brings in grant money. The scholarship manipulation is just part of a larger pattern." "Do you have proof?" Michael asked. "Some," she admitted. "I've been collecting evidence, but I'm not powerful enough to use it effectively. If I come forward alone, I'll lose my job before anything changes." "You're not alone anymore," Michael assured her. They made plans to meet again before Tuesday's board meeting, to coordinate their approach. As Michael and Jasmine left the classroom, they felt both encouraged and sobered by what they'd learned. "I can't believe she was your coach," Jasmine said as they walked to the car. "It's a small world," Michael replied, deep in thought. "But this is bigger than personal connections now. We need to be prepared for Tuesday." The following days were busy. Michael contacted his lawyer to review their evidence. He reached out to other Bulls alumni who had donated to the scholarship fund, informing them of what was happening. Jasmine coordinated with other rejected students, collecting their documentation to strengthen the case. By Monday night, they were ready. Michael laid out his suit for the board meeting, not his flashiest, but his most professional. This wasn't about intimidating anyone with his celebrity. It was about being taken seriously as a parent and a concerned citizen. "Are you nervous?" Jasmine asked as they reviewed their presentation one last time. "No," Michael said truthfully. "I've faced tougher opponents." "The Detroit Pistons?" Jasmine joked. "Much tougher than the Pistons," Michael smiled. "The Pistons never messed with my kids." The next morning, they arrived at Lincoln Academy thirty minutes before the board meeting was scheduled to begin. The conference room was already filling with teachers, administrators, and a few curious parents who had heard rumors about Michael Jordan's attendance. Victor Reynolds sat at the head of the long table, looking confident and unconcerned. When he saw Michael enter, a flicker of surprise crossed his face, quickly replaced by a dismissive smile. Mrs. Washington caught Michael's eye from across the room and gave him a subtle nod. They were as ready as they could be as the meeting was called. To order, Michael felt a familiar calm settle over him, the same feeling he used to get before big games. This wasn't about basketball, but the stakes felt just as high. This was about justice, about fairness, about teaching his daughter that some things were worth fighting for. Little did the board members know that Michael Jordan wasn't just there to complain about a rejected scholarship. He was there to change the entire system. The board meeting began with routine matters: budget approvals, facility updates, and staff announcements. Michael sat quietly next to Jasmine, waiting for the public comments section where non-board members could speak. Victor Reynolds conducted the meeting with practiced efficiency, occasionally glancing toward Michael with a mixture of curiosity and disdain. When he finally announced, "We'll now hear public comments," Michael stood. The room fell silent. Even people who had seen Michael Jordan before were struck by his presence, tall, confident, and completely focused. "My name is Michael Jordan," he began, his voice calm but carrying authority. "My daughter Jasmine applied for the Athletic Excellence Scholarship this year and was rejected despite having qualifications that exceeded many who received the scholarship." Reynolds interrupted. "Mr. Jordan, while we appreciate your interest, individual scholarship decisions are not appropriate for public discussion due to student privacy concerns." "I'm not here to discuss just my daughter's case," Michael clarified. "I'm here because we've discovered a pattern of discrimination in the scholarship selection process that violates the program's own guidelines." He placed his folder on the table and distributed copies of the evidence they'd collected. "These documents show that for the past three years, qualified students from higher-income families have been systematically rejected in favor of students with lower qualifications but greater financial need." Board members looked uncomfortable as they reviewed the papers. One woman in a blue blazer spoke up. "The scholarship guidelines clearly state selection should be based solely on merit, not financial status." "Exactly," Michael agreed. "Yet, the evidence shows otherwise," Reynolds's face flushed. "These are merely coincidences. You've connected unrelated dots to create a pattern that doesn't exist. Five rejected students this year had better statistics, grades, and community service hours than those selected," Michael countered. "All five come from financially stable families. That's not coincidence, that's bias." News of Michael's appearance at the meeting had spread quickly through social media. Outside the conference room, students, parents, and community members began to gather. Several former scholarship recipients showed up, concerned about the integrity of the program that had helped them. The board chair, a stern woman named Dr. Harmon, tried to regain control of the meeting. "Mr. Jordan, we understand your concerns and will review this information carefully. For now, I believe we need to..." She was interrupted by a commotion at the door. Three men entered the room, Charles Oakley, Scotty Pippin, and Phil Jackson. The sight of four Chicago Bulls legends in one room caused whispers to ripple through the crowd. "Sorry we're late," Phil said calmly, taking a seat next to Michael. "Traffic was terrible." "What is this?" Reynolds demanded, his composure cracking. "This meeting is being hijacked." "These gentlemen helped establish the scholarship program," Michael explained. "They have every right to be concerned about how their donations are being used." Phil Jackson spoke next, his measured voice drawing everyone's attention. "When we created this scholarship ten years ago, our intent was clear, to reward excellence regardless of background. We're troubled by what we've learned about how selections are now being made." Outside, local news crews began to arrive. The story of Michael Jordan confronting a school board over discrimination was too compelling to ignore. Students were giving interviews, sharing their experiences with the scholarship process. Inside, Reynolds tried to end the meeting. "We need to adjourn and address these matters privately." "No," Michael said firmly. "These are public funds and donations being misused. The community deserves transparency." Mrs. Washington stood up from her seat at the side of the room. "As a member of the scholarship committee, I can confirm that financial status has become an unofficial criterion for selection, despite not being in the guidelines." Reynolds glared at her. "You're out of order, Mrs. Washington." "Maybe," she replied calmly. "But I'm telling the truth." Dr. Harmon, seeing the situation spiraling out of control, made a decision. "I think we need to suspend this meeting and reconvene after the board has reviewed these allegations thoroughly." As people began to file out, Michael approached Reynolds. "This isn't personal," he said quietly. "It's about fairness." Reynolds's expression hardened. "Not personal? You storming in here with your celebrity friends and media circus? Don't pretend this is about anything other than using your fame to get what you want." "What I want," Michael replied evenly, "is for every student to be judged on their merits, including my daughter and all the others who were unfairly rejected." Outside, the crowd had grown. Former students, teachers, and community members mingled with reporters. Michael emerged to find Jasmine surrounded by other rejected applicants, all sharing their stories. "Mr. Jordan," someone called. A young man in a Lincoln Academy basketball uniform approached. "I'm Tyler Castro. I... I got one of the scholarships this year." The crowd quieted, watching the interaction. "I just wanted to say," Tyler continued nervously, "if there was something wrong with how we were selected, I want it fixed too. I earned my spot on the court, and I want to know I earned my scholarship fair and square." Michael shook the young man's hand. "That's exactly what we all want, Tyler." "Thank you for your honesty." Over the next few days, the story exploded across Chicago. Local news covered it extensively, and social media buzzed with comments. Former scholarship recipients came forward, some defending the program, others questioning whether they had truly been the most qualified. At home, Jasmine watched the controversy unfold with mixed feelings. "Do you wish we'd never started this?" Michael asked her. "Sometimes," she admitted. "The attention is uncomfortable. But then, I think about all the other students who worked just as hard as me and got rejected for the wrong reasons. They deserve better." Michael nodded, proud of his daughter's perspective. "This was never just about getting you a scholarship. It was about teaching you something more important." "What's that?" "That standing up for what's right matters, even when it's difficult, especially when it's difficult." The following morning, Michael received a call from Dr. Harmon. "Mr. Jordan, the board would like to meet with you privately to discuss a resolution." "I'm happy to meet," Michael replied, "but any resolution needs to address the systematic problems, not just Jasmine's case." Dr. Harmon paused. "I understand. I think you'll find we're ready to consider comprehensive changes." As Michael hung up the phone, he felt cautiously optimistic. The community had rallied around the cause of fairness, not because Michael Jordan was involved, but because people recognized an injustice when they saw one. The next board meeting would determine whether real change was possible, and Michael Jordan was prepared for either outcome. Before the private meeting with the school board, Michael decided a deeper investigation was needed. He hired Marcus Williams, a respected education consultant who specialized in scholarship. "Program reviews. We need to understand exactly how deep this problem goes," Michael explained to Marcus in his home office. "Not just the patterns we've seen, but the actual decision-making process." Marcus nodded. "I'll need access to the complete scholarship records for the past five years. Applications, committee notes, everything." The board chair promised cooperation, Michael said. "We'll see if they deliver." Jasmine entered with a stack of papers. "I found something weird, Dad," she spread several spreadsheets on the desk. "These are the school's published statistics about scholarship recipients, but the numbers don't match what Mrs. Washington gave us." Marcus examined the documents. "You're right. According to the public reports, twenty-two percent of scholarships went to students from upper-middle-class families last year, but the actual records show only eight percent." "They're manipulating the numbers," Michael realized, "making it look more balanced than it really is." The investigation expanded. Marcus assembled a small team to review years of data. They worked from Michael's home office, creating charts and graphs that revealed clear patterns of discrimination. Mrs. Washington provided committee meeting minutes that showed how Reynolds steered decisions toward his preferred candidates. In the one case, he had personally changed scores on evaluation forms after other committee members had left the room. The evidence was mounting, but they needed more. Michael reached out to former scholarship committee members who had resigned over the years. "Reynolds made it impossible to be fair," said one former teacher who had left three years earlier. "When I questioned his methods, he threatened my job." As they dug deeper, concerning financial irregularities emerged. "The scholarship program received substantial donations each year, but not all of that money seemed to reach students. There's about fifty thousand dollars per year that's unaccounted for," Marcus reported, pointing to the funding discrepancies. "It's listed as administrative expenses, but there's no breakdown." The private meeting with the board was scheduled for Thursday afternoon. The night before, Michael received an unexpected phone call. "Mr. Jordan? This is Damon Reynolds, Victor's son." Michael was surprised. "What can I do for you, Damon?" "My father doesn't know I'm calling," Damon said, his voice nervous. "But I've seen what he's doing. I've watched him change scores, manipulate the committee. He even made me apply for the scholarship when I was at Lincoln, even though I didn't need it." "Did you get it?" Michael asked. "Yes," Damon admitted. "Over more qualified students. I've felt guilty about it for years." "Why are you telling me this now?" "Because it's wrong," Damon said simply. "And someone needs to stop him," Damon offered, "to provide written testimony about what he had witnessed." It was a breakthrough, direct evidence from someone within Reynolds's inner circle. The next day, Michael... The next day, Michael, Marcus, and Mrs. Washington arrived at Lincoln Academy for the private board meeting. They were surprised to find several new faces around. The table, including the district superintendent and a representative from the state education department.[615.19][615.19]"Word has spread," Dr. Harmon explained. "The allegations are serious enough to warrant broader oversight." Victor Reynolds sat stiffly at the far end of the table. He no longer looked dismissive, but defensive.[630.16][630.16]"Before we begin," Dr. Harmon said, "I should inform everyone that we've initiated our own internal review based on the concerns raised at the last meeting."[640.48][640.48]"And what have you found?" Michael asked.[643.16][643.16]"Troubling inconsistencies," she admitted, "which is why we've invited additional oversight today." Michael presented their evidence methodically. Marcus provided expert analysis of the patterns they'd U I B discovered. Mrs. Washington shared her firsthand experiences on the committee. Finally, Michael produced Damon Reynolds's sworn statement. The room fell silent as board members read the document. Victor Reynolds's face paled.[674.27][674.27]"This is absurd," Reynolds finally sputtered.[677.94][677.94]"My own son has been turned against me."[680.82][680.82]"This is all part of Jordan's vendetta because his daughter didn't get what she wanted." The superintendent spoke for the first time.[689.06][689.06]"Mr. Reynolds, we've reviewed the financial records as well. Can you explain why scholarship funds were transferred to accounts under your personal control?" Reynolds's confident facade crumbled. Those transfers were authorized for program development. Everything was approved.[708.70][708.70]"By whom?" the superintendent pressed. Reynolds had no answer. Dr. Harmon cleared her throat.[716.32][716.32]"In light of this information, I believe we need to place Mr. Reynolds on administrative leave pending a full investigation."[724.48][724.48]"You can't do that!" Reynolds protested.[728.18][728.18]"I built this scholarship program!" Actually, Phil Jackson spoke up from the back of the room where he had been quietly observing.[736.85][736.85]"We built it, and you corrupted it." The meeting continued for hours as they discussed how to address the years of misconduct. By the end, several decisive actions had been approved. A complete restructuring of the scholarship committee with transparent selection, criteria, an independent audit of the program's finances, and the creation of a new oversight board that included donors, teachers, and students. As Michael and Jasmine drove home that evening, there was a sense of accomplishment, but also awareness that the work had just begun.[774.58][774.58]"What happens now?" Jasmine asked.[777.13][777.13]"The investigation will continue," Michael explained.[780.50][780.50]"It might take months to sort everything out."[783.61][783.61]"What about the other students who were wrongly rejected? And those who got scholarships they maybe shouldn't have?" Michael considered this.[792.25][792.25]"That's a tough question. We can't just take scholarships away from current students. That wouldn't be fair to them. But we need to find a way to make things right for those who were unfairly rejected." An idea began to form in Michael's mind, something bigger than just fixing one scholarship program at one school, something that could help students across Chicago. That night, he called his financial advisors and lawyers.[821.10][821.10]"I want to set up a foundation," he told them, something focused on educational fairness. The next morning, headlines across Chicago announced "Reynolds suspended amid scholarship scandal" and "Jordan investigation reveals years of misconduct at Lincoln Academy." Social media exploded with stories from former students who had experienced similar discrimination. It wasn't just Lincoln Academy. The problem existed in schools throughout the city. Michael's phone rang constantly with calls from parents, educators, and community leaders wanting to share their experiences or offer support. What had started as one father advocating for his daughter had sparked a citywide conversation about fairness in education. As the investigation progressed, more troubling details emerged. Reynolds had been diverting scholarship funds for personal use. The scholarship selection process had been corrupt for years before he even took over, with spots often reserved for children of the wealthy and well-connected. Mrs. Washington continued to provide crucial information, revealing decades of systemic problems that went far beyond one man's misconduct. The entire educational system seemed built on relationships and money rather than merit. But now, finally, people were paying attention. Change was coming, though not as quickly as Michael would have liked.[914.82][914.82]"Real change takes time," he told Jasmine. One evening as they reviewed the latest findings.[921.43][921.43]"Just like becoming great at basketball didn't happen overnight."[926.04][926.04]"Was it worth it?" she asked.[928.51][928.51]"Starting all of this?" Michael looked at his daughter, determined, principled, unafraid to challenge injustice, and saw himself in her.[939.75][939.75]"Absolutely," he said with conviction.[942.43][942.43]"Some battles need to be fought, regardless of the outcome. That's what champions do." Little did anyone know that Michael Jordan was already planning something that would transform educational opportunities for students across Chicago, something that would shock not just the Lincoln Academy school board, but the entire city. In his home office, Michael sat surrounded by legal documents, financial statements, and education reports. The walls that usually displayed his basketball achievements were now covered with charts showing educational disparities across Chicago neighborhoods.[980.70][980.70]"You've been in here for three days straight," Jasmine observed, bringing him a sandwich.[986.66][986.66]"Mom says you need to eat," Michael smiled, taking the plate.[991.32][991.32]"Thanks, Jas. I've been working on something important." Jasmine examined the documents spread across his desk.[998.50][998.50]"The Jordan Educational Fairness Foundation?" she read from a draft proposal.[1003.23][1003.23]"That's right," Michael nodded.[1006.30][1006.30]"What happened at Lincoln Academy isn't isolated. The same problems exist throughout. The city, scholarships, and opportunities not going to the most deserving students."[1018.01][1018.01]"So you're starting a foundation?"[1021.19][1021.19]"More than that," Michael said, his eyes lighting up with the same intensity they once had on the basketball court.[1028.28][1028.28]"I'm creating a system to identify bias in school programs and correct it." He showed her a detailed plan that included scholarship oversight committees, independent review boards, and funding for legal challenges to discriminatory practices.[1045.91][1045.91]"This is huge, Dad," Jasmine said, impressed.[1050.53][1050.53]"Way bigger than just fighting for my scholarship."[1054.88][1054.88]"That's because it was never just about your scholarship," Michael explained.[1059.88][1059.88]"It was about what's right. Sometimes you have to take a stand, even when it would be easier to walk away." The next day, Michael gathered his team of advisors, lawyers, education experts, and his old Bulls teammates who had supported him from the beginning.[1079.10][1079.10]"The foundation will start with ten million dollars," Michael told them.[1083.53][1083.53]"Initial focus on three areas: scholarship review boards to ensure fair selection processes, legal support for students facing discrimination, and direct scholarships to students who were unfairly rejected in the past."[1099.48][1099.48]"Ten million?" Scotty Pippen whistled.[1102.42][1102.42]"That's a serious commitment, Mike."[1104.82][1104.82]"It's what's needed," Michael said simply.[1107.71][1107.71]"We're not just fixing one school. We're changing the system." His legal team presented the incorporation documents ready to be signed. "The foundation would be independent, but collaborative, working with schools rather than against them whenever possible."[1125.83][1125.83]"What about Reynolds and Lincoln Academy?" Charles Oakley asked.[1129.96][1129.96]"Are you still pursuing that case?"[1132.13][1132.13]"Absolutely," Michael confirmed.[1135.01][1135.01]"That investigation continues, but this is bigger than Reynolds or any single administrator. This is about changing how educational opportunities are distributed." Jasmine had been listening quietly.[1149.88][1149.88]"I want to..."[1151.17][1151.17]"Help?" she said suddenly.[1153.91][1153.91]"I want to be part of the student advisory board." Michael looked at his daughter with pride.[1160.28][1160.28]"I was hoping you'd say that." As word spread about Michael's plan, support poured in from unexpected places. Other athletes and celebrities offered donations. Teachers' associations expressed interest in partnering with the foundation. Even some school administrators, recognizing the need for reform, reached out to collaborate. Not everyone was supportive, of course. Some critics accused Michael of overreacting to his daughter's rejection. Others questioned whether a basketball player, even one as successful as Michael Jordan, had the expertise to reform education systems.[1201.23][1201.23]"They said the same thing when I started my business ventures," Michael told Jasmine when she showed him the negative comments online. "They said a basketball player couldn't succeed in business. I proved them wrong then, and I'll prove them wrong now." A week before the next Lincoln Academy board meeting, Michael received a call from Dr. Harmon.[1224.41][1224.41]"Mr. Jordan, our investigation has confirmed most of your allegations against Mr. Reynolds," she said, her voice solemn.[1233.42][1233.42]"The financial improprieties are particularly troubling. The district attorney has been notified."[1240.38][1240.38]"And the scholarship selections?" Michael pressed.[1244.01][1244.01]"Also problematic," she admitted.[1246.63][1246.63]"We've found clear evidence of bias in the process. The board is prepared to issue a formal apology and restructure the program."[1255.33][1255.33]"That's a start," Michael acknowledged, "but I'll be presenting a more comprehensive solution at the next meeting."[1262.10][1262.10]"What kind of solution?" Dr. Harmon asked cautiously.[1266.45][1266.45]"You'll see next Tuesday," Michael replied. The weekend before the meeting, Michael invited all the students who had been unfairly rejected for scholarships over the past three years to his home. Seventeen teenagers and their families gathered in his living room, sharing stories of disappointment and lost opportunities.[1287.75][1287.75]"I can't change what happened to you," Michael told them, "but I can help ensure it doesn't happen to others. And I can offer you something else," he explained his plan for the foundation, which would include retroactive scholarships for those who had been wrongfully rejected, not just at Lincoln Academy, but at schools throughout Chicago.[1310.83][1310.83]"Your experiences matter," he told them.[1314.45][1314.45]"They're the reason this foundation exists." Jasmine watched her father with new understanding. Throughout her life, she had known him as a basketball legend, a business success, a demanding but loving father. Now she was seeing another side of him, the fighter for justice, the man who used his influence not just for himself, but for others. The night before the board meeting, Michael finalized his presentation. His plan wasn't just about exposing problems. It was about offering solutions, practical, funded, immediate solutions that could be implemented right away.[1358.51][1358.51]"Are you nervous?" his wife asked as they got ready for bed.[1362.58][1362.58]"No," Michael smiled.[1364.78][1364.78]"I'm excited. This feels right."[1368.10][1368.10]"Like game six against the Jazz?" she teased, referring to his famous championship-winning shot.[1375.28][1375.28]"Better," Michael said, "because this isn't about winning a game or even a championship. This is about changing lives." The next morning, Michael dressed carefully in a conservative gray suit, not the flashy attire of a celebrity, but the serious outfit of a man on a mission. Jasmine wore her school uniform, a reminder that this was, at its core, about students, as he high-sayed. They drove to Lincoln Academy. Michael's phone buzzed with a text from Mrs. Washington.[1409.16][1409.16]"Reynolds just resigned." Bored in chaos, perfect timing. Michael smiled. The path was clear for real change. His plan wasn't just about exposing wrongdoing. It was about building something better in its place.[1425.53][1425.53]"Ready?" he asked Jasmine as they pulled into the parking lot, already crowded with news vans and community members. Jasmine nodded.[1436.63][1436.63]"Ready?" Together, they walked toward the school, father and daughter united in purpose. Little did the board know that what Michael Jordan was about to propose would forever change not just Lincoln Academy, but education across Chicago. The Lincoln Academy auditorium was packed beyond capacity. What had started as a regular board, meeting had transformed into a community event. Teachers, students, parents, and media crowded every available space. The air buzzed with anticipation. Dr. Harmon called the meeting to order, her voice betraying her nervousness.[1477.71][1477.71]"Before we begin, I must announce that Mr. Victor Reynolds has tendered his resignation effective immediately. The board has accepted his resignation in light of the ongoing investigation." Murmurs rippled through the crowd. Michael and Jasmine exchanged glances but remained composed.[1499.53][1499.53]"We will now hear from Mr. Michael Jordan regarding the scholarship program," Dr. Harmon continued. Michael approached the podium calmly. Behind him, a small technical team set up cameras and recording equipment, something he had arranged with the board's permission.[1517.82][1517.82]"Thank you for allowing me to speak today," Michael began. "What started as my concern about my daughter's scholarship rejection has revealed something much more significant." He gestured to the screen behind him, where Marcus Williams displayed charts showing the scholarship selection patterns over the past five years.[1540.03][1540.03]"These graphs demonstrate a clear bias against qualified students from certain backgrounds," Michael explained.[1546.88][1546.88]"This isn't just about my daughter. It's about every student who was judged not on their merits, but on factors that should have been irrelevant." The data was compelling. Year after year, students with top qualifications had been passed over if they came from wealthy families or had famous parents. Meanwhile, committee members' relatives had received scholarships despite lower qualifications. "The investigation has revealed financial irregularities as well," Michael continued.[1579.21][1579.21]"Approximately two hundred fifty thousand dollars in scholarship funds over the past five years has been diverted to other purposes without proper oversight." Gasps echoed through the auditorium. This was new information, even to many board members.[1597.80][1597.80]"But I'm not here today just to highlight problems," Michael said, his voice growing stronger.[1603.82][1603.82]"I'm here to offer solutions." He outlined his plan for the Jordan Educational Fairness Foundation, explaining how it would work with schools to ensure transparent, merit-based selection processes for all educational opportunities. "The foundation will provide independent oversight, legal support for students facing discrimination, and yes, retroactive scholarships for those who were unfairly rejected in the past." Dr. Harmon looked concerned.[1635.82][1635.82]"While we appreciate your initiative, Mr. Jordan, this board cannot simply hand over authority to an outside organization."[1644.53][1644.53]"I'm not asking for authority," Michael clarified.[1648.13][1648.13]"I'm offering partnership. The foundation will work alongside schools, not replace existing structures." One board member, a stern-looking man with a bow tie, spoke up.[1661.45][1661.45]"This feels like an overreaction to one student not getting a scholarship. With all due respect, Mr. Jordan, perhaps you're not accustomed to your family not getting what they want." The room tensed at the implied criticism. Michael remained calm.[1680.16][1680.16]"This isn't about what my family wants," he replied.[1684.88][1684.88]"It's about what's right. And if you doubt the scope of the problem..." He signaled to his team, who distributed folders to each board member. "These are sworn statements from seventeen students who were unfairly rejected over the past three years, along with documentation proving they were more qualified than those selected." The board members looked increasingly uncomfortable as they reviewed the evidence. Additionally, Michael continued, "we have testimony from former committee members describing how they were pressured to reject certain students regardless of qualifications." He nodded toward Mrs. Washington, who stood up from her seat.[1724.98][1724.98]"I've served on the scholarship committee for eight years," she said clearly.[1729.73][1729.73]"I can confirm that the selection process has been compromised by bias and, in some cases, outright corruption." Another board member, a younger woman who had been quietly taking notes, finally spoke.[1745.48][1745.48]"If what you're saying is true, and this evidence is compelling, then we have failed these students terribly."[1753.51][1753.51]"Yes," Michael agreed, "but now you have an opportunity to make it right." He revealed the recording equipment his team had set up.[1762.88][1762.88]"Today's meeting is being recorded, not to trap anyone or assign blame, but to document a turning point. Today, Lincoln Academy can choose to be part of the solution." Dr. Harmon looked startled.[1777.16][1777.16]"You're recording this? That's highly unusual."[1781.26][1781.26]"So is a school systematically discriminating against qualified students," Michael countered.[1787.38][1787.38]"Transparency is essential for rebuilding trust." The room fell silent as the board members whispered among themselves. Finally, Dr. Harmon addressed Michael again.
Finally, Dr. Harmon addressed Michael again. "What exactly are you proposing we do right now, Mr. Jordan?"
Michael laid out three immediate actions. Establish an independent review committee to oversee the next scholarship selection cycle. Create a fund to provide retroactive support for unfairly rejected students. And implement a transparent scoring system that would be available to all applicants. "The Jordan Educational Fairness Foundation will match every dollar the school commits to these initiatives," he added. "This isn't about blame, it's about making things right moving forward." As the board discussed his proposals, Michael noticed a shift in the room. What had started as defensiveness was evolving into determination. Teachers nodded in agreement. Parents whispered their support. Even some board members seemed energized by the possibility of real change. After an hour of debate, Dr. Harmon called for a vote on Michael's proposals. One by one, hands went up, seven, eight, nine, until all eleven board members had voted to approve. The crowd erupted in applause. Michael felt Jasmine's hand slip into his, and he squeezed it gently. "This is just the beginning," he told the EE. Bored, when the noise died down. "Real change requires ongoing commitment."
Dr. Harmon nodded solemnly. "Lincoln Academy is committed to doing better. We failed these students, and for that, we apologize."
As the meeting concluded, reporters surrounded Michael, but he deflected most questions. "Today isn't about me," he insisted. "It's about fixing a broken system." Outside the auditorium, students and parents approached to share their stories or simply thank him for taking a stand. Jasmine stood proudly beside her father, no longer just Michael Jordan's daughter, but a young woman who had helped spark meaningful change. As they walked to their car, Mrs. Washington caught up with them.
"I knew you wouldn't give up," she told.
"Michael? Not the boy who turned being cut from varsity into fuel for greatness." Michael smiled. "Some lessons stay with you forever." That night, as Chicago news programs reported on the Jordan Educational Revolution, Michael sat in his home office making calls to education leaders throughout the city. This was just one school, one scholarship program. The real work was just beginning. Jasmine appeared in the doorway, watching her father work with quiet admiration.
"You never told me what you're planning to announce at the press conference tomorrow," she said.
Michael looked up, his eyes twinkling with the same competitive. Fire that had once terrified NBA opponents. Something big, he promised, something that will change everything. Little did anyone suspect just how big Michael Jordan's announcement would be, or that it would reveal a connection between Michael and Lincoln Academy that went back decades before Jasmine was ever born. The next morning, Michael carefully selected his outfit for the press conference. Not his usual designer suit, but something more meaningful. A simple blue blazer with a small pin on the lapel showing the Lincoln Academy Eagle mascot. It was the same pin he had received over forty years ago, when he was just a skinny teenager from North Carolina.
"Dad, the car's here," Jasmine called from downstairs. She was dressed professionally in a navy blue dress, looking older than her sixteen years.
On the drive to the conference center, Michael reviewed his notes one last time. This announcement had been months in planning, even before Jasmine's scholarship rejection. What had started as a father defending his daughter had evolved into something much more significant. The conference room was packed with reporters, educators, and community leaders. Phil Jackson, Scotty Pippin, and Charles Oakley sat in the front row, offering silent support. Mrs. Washington was there too, seated discreetly near the back. Michael approached the podium as cameras flashed. Jasmine stood slightly behind him, nervous but composed. "Thank you all for coming," Michael began. "Today marks a new chapter for education in Chicago. But before I share our plans, I want to tell you a story that few people know." The room quieted as Michael continued. "When I was fourteen years old, my family moved briefly to Chicago when my father was transferred here for work. For three months, I attended Lincoln Academy on a partial scholarship. I was a skinny, unknown kid from North Carolina with big dreams." Murmurs rippled through the audience. This was not public knowledge. "At Lincoln, I met a young teacher named Sarah Washington, who saw something in me that others missed," she encouraged. "Me not just as an athlete, but as a student and a person. When we moved back to North Carolina, she wrote me a letter that I've kept all these years." Michael pulled out a worn envelope from his jacket pocket. She wrote, "Remember, Michael? True greatness isn't measured by trophies or points scored, but by the lives you touch and the good you do when the cameras aren't watching." He looked toward Mrs. Washington, who wiped away a tear. "I didn't fully understand those words then, but I do now." Michael took a deep breath before continuing. "Today, I'm announcing the creation of the Jordan Educational Fairness Foundation with an initial commitment of fifty million dollars." Gasps echoed through the room. The amount was far larger than the ten million dollars that had been rumored. "This foundation will work with schools across Chicago to ensure that every student is evaluated solely on their merits, not on their background or family. Connections. It will provide oversight for scholarship programs, legal support for students facing discrimination, and direct educational funding for those who have been unfairly disadvantaged." He detailed the foundation's three-part approach. Transparency in selection processes, accountability for educational institutions, and support for affected students. "But that's just the beginning," Michael continued. "I'm also announcing the Jordan Merit Scholarship Program, a one hundred million dollar commitment over the next decade to provide scholarships to students who demonstrate excellence in academics, athletics, or community service, regardless of their financial... status." The room erupted in applause and shocked whispers. This was far beyond what anyone had expected. "Each recipient will be selected by an independent committee using transparent criteria that will be published publicly. Every applicant will receive their scores and detailed feedback. No more mysterious rejections." Michael went on to explain that the first twenty scholarships would go to students who had been unfairly rejected from other programs in the past. Three years, including those from Lincoln Academy. "These young people did everything right," he said firmly. "They excelled in their studies, performed on the court or field, and served their communities. They deserved better, and now they'll get it." As impressive as these announcements were, Michael wasn't finished. "Finally, I want to address the systemic issues that allowed these problems to persist for so long." He revealed that the foundation would establish an Educational Fairness Institute at the University of Chicago, dedicated to researching and addressing biases in educational opportunities nationwide. "What happened at Lincoln Academy isn't unique," Michael explained. "These problems exist throughout our educational system. The institute will work to identify and solve them on a national scale." As Michael concluded his prepared remarks, an old reporter called out, "Why are you doing all this? Is this still about your daughter's rejected scholarship?" Michael looked at Jasmine, then back to the crowd. "This started with my daughter, yes, but it became about something much bigger. It's about all the children who don't have a Michael Jordan to fight for them. It's about making sure excellence is rewarded regardless of who your parents are or where you come from." Another reporter asked, "What about Lincoln Academy? Are you still pursuing action against them?" "Lincoln Academy has committed to meaningful reforms," Michael replied. "They'll be the first school to partner with our foundation to implement new selection processes. I believe in second chances and moving forward positively." As questions continued, Mrs. Washington quietly made her way to the front of the room. Michael spotted her and smiled. "I'd like to introduce someone special," he said. "Mrs. Sarah Washington, my former teacher, mentor, and the newest member of our foundation's board of directors." Mrs. Washington stepped forward as the room applauded. "Mrs. Washington has been fighting these battles from inside the system for decades," Michael explained. "She's been collecting evidence, advocating for students, and pushing for change with limited support. Now she'll have the resources to make that change happen." Mrs. Washington approached the microphone. "I've spent forty years in education. Watching talented students get overlooked because they didn't have the right connections or the right story today marks the beginning of a new chapter, one where merit truly matters." As the press conference concluded, Michael and Jasmine were surrounded by well-wishers and supporters. School administrators across the city pledged to work with the U Foundation. Community leaders offered partnerships. It was everything Michael had hoped for. Later that evening, as they drove home, Jasmine turned to her father. "So Mrs. Washington was your teacher before she was mine? That's why you recognized her?" Michael nodded. "She believed in me when I was just a skinny kid with big dreams, and forty years later, she was still fighting for what's right. The letter she wrote you, was that what gave you the idea for all of this?" "Part of it," Michael admitted. "But mostly, it was watching you handle your rejection with such grace and determination. You didn't just get angry, you wanted to fix the system for everyone. That's when I knew this needed to be bigger than just your scholarship."
Jasmine smiled. "I learned that from you, Dad."
Michael looked at his daughter with pride. In all his years of competition, in all his business ventures and charitable works, nothing felt quite as meaningful as this. Fighting alongside his daughter for something that mattered. "You know," he said thoughtfully, "sometimes the most important. Victories don't come with trophies or championships. Sometimes they're about changing things that need to be changed." As they pulled into their driveway, Michael's phone buzzed with a text from Mrs. Washington. "You proved me right after all these years. Greatness isn't just about what you achieve. It's about what you make possible for others." Michael smiled. The journey had come full circle. From a disappointed student to a champion, from a champion to a father, from a father to a changemaker. The lessons had been there all along, waiting for the right moment to be fully understood. And as for Lincoln Academy? The school that had once rejected his daughter would now become a model for educational fairness nationwide, all because Michael Jordan had refused to accept an answer that didn't make sense. That was the real victory, and it was sweeter than any championship. Where are you listening from? We'd love to know in the comments below. If you enjoyed this story, please take a moment to like this video and subscribe to our channel for more inspirational content like this. We share new stories every week that will touch your heart and inspire you. Don't forget to share this video with your friends and family. By spreading these messages of determination, fairness, and standing up for what's right, we can all contribute to building a kinder, more just world. Until next time, remember that real champions aren't just defined by their trophies, but by the positive changes they create for others.